Let me know when we can go.
All good.
Well, then, we are all good. Let's follow this meeting to order at seven oh three, eight oh three, by the way, that my server will change time for some reason this time. And if we can get a roll call, there was no question.
Yes, sir, Diane Law. Okay, Robert Richard Williams.
Here.
That Cassini Klein.
Here.
Matt Castillo.
Here.
Adam McDowell.
Here.
Valerie Reddell.
Here.
Mayor Paul Cameron.
Here.
Of course, Jay.
I am still here, believe it or not. All right, if we can stand, if you're able to put in allegiance. All right, all right, all right. Into the last fall, to say, start our meeting here today. As we begin our meeting, I'd give a quick shout out to the veterans out there. I wish them a belated happy Veterans Day to my fellow Marines. Happy birthday to forty-seven, it's good on us. Continuing to move forward, that is my run time again, unless you don't know. Having said that, we begin our meetings as always with public comment. If you are interested in anything concerned you'd like to raise to council, any comments that you have who are online, you have the ability to raise your hand, at which time apparently just raised my hand and kind of doing that. At which time we will call upon you, and you have three minutes to speak, please give your name and address prior to speaking. This is open for taxpayers and residents. We'll start in the room first, though, to see what we have, and then we'll move to online. Yes, sir.
All right, Barry Kislaf, one seventy-six Thornbury Drive. Just a question for council. Has council given any thought either as an individual body or all spoken in Monroeville to the question of deer control?
No, a wonderful question, a timely one. And there's been a number of residents over the past few months who have asked about that. And recently, I spoke with council about kind of redoing our committees, and one of the things that we did in that process is to put together a deer mitigation committee, which will be chaired by Brooke Shepherd-Williams. In that, the responsibility that really is to provide a plan, a long-term and short-term plan that addresses deer mitigation. You know, I think we all recognize that deer mitigation is not simply a calling of the deer. Right? That in and of itself, I'm not saying whether pro-call or anti or anything like that, simply saying that in and of itself is not a plan, it's a short-term fix. So whether the long-term plan comes to be something that includes that or doesn't include that, whether it is bird control, whether whatever, whatever comes out, I look forward to to what our committee will provide us, but it's certainly something that's been on the forefront and something that we expect council to come back to the answer to our questions.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, anybody else in?
Nothing.
All right, there's nobody else in the in person, and I'm not saying more, please, it's scary with the screens. So then I would look for if there was anybody online who is interested in commenting, if you raise your hand, we will promote you, at which time you'll have three minutes. I see we do have a few people, my correct Kathy's been committed. It looks like Kathy, I'm just born here, you are, you are first.
Okay, my name is Kathy Wardner, and I live at nineteen twenty-six Hampstead Drive. I want to, first off, I want to endorse Brooke's suggestion that she brought up last at the workshop meeting of writing a letter to homes on streets that are significantly impacted by roadwork. I think the example of Greensburg Pike and the streets leading to Greensburg Pike, I, I, I don't know if you did write a letter, if you did, then great, but I want to make sure that you know that I endorse that idea. I think that you should use multiple methods of communicating savvy citizen, which is great, and I, I hope to say a little bit more about that in a minute. Put information in the newsletter and also write a letter to the homes that are impacted the most. I'm sure Pindot does that if you have a drop, your home is on the street being worked on, but the streets leading off, I think, should also know. An example is I got the Savvy Citizen Alert, and I, I knew about it one time, but I apparently forgot because I ended up on Greensburg Pike when the work was being done, and I didn't need to go that route. So there had been, you know, multiple communication, I could have avoided that. I would like, I, I'm glad that Barry Kislaf asked about the deer because I, I was going to ask for an update, so I'm very happy to hear that update. I know it's controversial. I know some people don't want deer harmed in any way, much less, you know, killed in a, when you cull them. But I want to point out that I think it's inhumane to deer to allow the herd to get so large that the vegetation cannot support them. They're starving, they're not healthy, they carry Lyme disease that hurts humans. They're eating all the vegetation that other animals need to survive. So I think that, I, I hope that something will be done along those lines. And I'm really happy to hear Jay report on, you know, that you, you formed a specific committee, and I'm happy to hear that Brooke's going to chair that. I, I talked to Diana Yankis about this not long ago, and I think she may still have a lot of information when she worked on a committee, you know, several years ago on the same topic. And finally, on Savvy Citizen, I want to say, I, I think it's great, but I do want to point out something that I, I find a little bit challenging. I, I look at my phone, I see there's three notifications, and I go to Savvy Citizen, I can't tell what are the new notifications. And maybe five hours later, I look at my phone, I see four notifications, same thing. I don't know if you can do anything about this, you probably can't, but it would be great if it worked the same way Nextdoor does. You go to Nextdoor and you see the little icon at the bottom with, you know, you have four new notifications, and you can go right to a screen to see exactly what those are and click on them if you're interested. And then the next time you go to your phone, you've already looked at that, so they're not there, but you, you're able to key in on what is the new notification, and I, you may not be able to do anything about that, but I think it would be great if Savvy Citizen worked that way. If it does, I just don't know it, and maybe somebody can help bring me up to speed on it, but I think it's a great communication tool, and I'm very glad you have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Miss Ford, and I would just comment that both your comments regarding the communications, I mean, I can see the communication that committee chair nodding, taking your points. So it is those, both of those issues will sit in that committee, both in the space of whether we write letters, it would be a new policy, and that's something we were to wait a recommendation out of the committee from. As for the deer, you know, I have, you know, full faith and confidence that we'll come back, come back with a some, some solution, you know, not everybody's going to love, no matter what solution it come back with. I can guarantee that. But I think, yeah, I agree with you on a personal basis, I can't speak for the council, that there's clearly an issue and something that needs to be addressed. That being the case, I see another hand just gone up for Miss Fox.
Yeah, if you can meet yourself and Sandy, if you want to speak. Sandy Fox, thirty-eight Holland Road. On the issue of the deer, I hope that whatever is discussed is open to residents because I have very strong feelings about not harming the deer. So yes, there may be differences in neighbor to neighbor on this, but I would like to be part of that conversation, as I hope everyone has the ability to be before any decision is made.
Duly noted, I think, you know, and I'll leave it to the chair as it moves forward, then I haven't had discussion with her on the specific, her specific ideas with it, so I think after I talk with her, I can make better comments on that. But duly noted, thank you. Any, any other comments in response, I don't need to catch up. I'll take that as a note of silence. Any other comments before we move forward? I would like to give a couple extra minutes. I see we have a call in user also, so I don't know if if they have a comment that they wish to make. All in user, you have the ability to unmute right now if you would like make any comments. Give you a couple seconds because I know it does sometimes take a couple seconds to sort away through it. All right, I'm going to close then, public comment at this point, and move forward on your agenda to the ordinary items, beginning with the minutes.
Mr. President, I move to accept the meeting minutes for the Monday, October three, twenty twenty-two Borough Council Workshop Meeting, and Monday, October ten, twenty twenty-two, regular council meeting.
Second, thank you, and thank you for the second. Any discussion on minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the minutes are accepted without opposition. Moving forward to the mayor's report, to the mayor, if you would like to.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief Roland Ackley has reported to me that there were no critical or significant incidents during the month of October twenty twenty-two. Our officers handled a total of one thousand ninety-five events for a total of eleven thousand eighty-nine year-to-date, consisting of both calls for service and proactive patrol engagements in detail, resulting in nine arrests. Chief Roland Ackley has reported to me that the total amount of magistrate files collected for the month of October twenty twenty-two was five hundred fifty-two dollars and forty-six cents. The total for the year was five thousand eight oh one, eight hundred one dollars and thirty percent. So I, I did make a mistake on the original report. I had forty-five thousand dollars on it, but I noticed, make that correction, only five thousand eight hundred one dollars and thirty percent, tiny difference. My news. The Department of the Police Vehicle has logged four thousand four hundred eight miles in the past month. The ticket summary for the month of October twenty twenty-two was fifty-six, six non-traffic, eleven parking tickets, and thirty-nine traffic tickets. Despite the weather on the evening of Halloween, October thirty-first, trick and treat, trick or treat was successful with no incidents reported. After several months of waiting for the new Ford Explorer EcoBoost police vehicle has finally arrived at the dealership. Upfitting a vehicle with the equipment necessary to put in the service is underway. Supply chain issues are hindering this completion. Chief does not have a delivery date in his time. Chief Ackley and the department would like to extend a wish for a very safe and happy, wonderful Thanksgiving. Details and other related statistics concerning the police department during the month of October twenty twenty-two are reported on the attached police department reports. One other item we made. I received this letter forward from our chief, it was dated October twenty-fourth. It says, Dear Officer Christopher Lewandowski, thank you so much for understanding, for your understanding, help and compassion on Saturday, October eighth, twenty twenty-two, after our car was unexpectedly hit from behind while we were waiting with our, our blinker on to make a left-hand turn. My son Jonathan Marks called nine-one-one, and you were the officer on duty. You listened patiently, assessed the situation, and called a tow truck for both, for both of the damaged vehicles. You took charge and even gave us a ride to Avis Office so we could get another rental car after ours was damaged. You asked about our well-being and guided us through the experience that choked us. You were the right person at the right time in our hour of need. You are an asset to the Churchill Police Department. Please share this with your chief so he knows what a difference you had made that day. Sincerely, Judith Marks, LaCesia, Wisconsin. So we thank Officer Lewandowski, not just Officer Lewandowski, but all of our officers. I, I hear reports like this all the time.
I would act like I'm surprised that you get letters of commendation for our officers, but I am not. I'm quite proud, and also to walk a shot, my sister lived about half a mile from there. Having said that, I appreciate it. At this time, I entertain a motion to accept the mayor's report. Second, any discussion? We do have the chief in, in our presence, so if you have questions, he's here as well. Any discussion from council? Hearing none, then?
I have a question.
Yes, absolutely.
I don't know, Mr. President, if you permit me asking the question about the interest in hiring a new officer. And I wanted to kind of know, what are you expecting with hiring a new officer? What benefits will the community have from that?
Well, I think anytime you increase, increase your, the number of officers on the road, subsequently you'll by default, you know, you're putting more officers on the road, so that's always a good thing for the community, but um we're, we work a, a good number of one-man shifts, literally one officer on the road by himself. And we rely strongly on Wilkins Township and Forest Hills to back us up on a regular basis. We try to return the favors as much as possible. We all work well together, but the reality is incidents, just like yesterday morning in Forest Hills with the officer involved shooting, there were only two officers in Forest Hills after that incident happened. We have one officer on the road who was covering for both Forest Hills and Churchill. Now, our primary goal here is the safety of the residents here in the community, but I just think that it's been such a long time that we've been working single-man shifts, and it's because we don't have a shift minimum in the contract. So I, like other departments, we can kind of regulate our overtime because we're not mandated to make sure there's at least two guys on duty. The caveat to that is we do have a lot of one-man shifts, and when I got hired here almost seventeen years ago, we had eleven officers. Up until last year, when we hired two officers, we were at seven, which included me, so we were four short. Right now, we're at nine, which includes me. But I'm a working chief, you know, I, I work the road dancer calls as I, as I did in my, my admin stuff, but um I just think that, you know, at some point, we're going to have to, you know, where we it keeps our overtime costs low by not having to have that second officer on the road, but I think we, at some point, given the, the climate of society and how violent things are, how many weapons are on the street, and, and the, the activity that's happening just over the hill from us on a daily, literally on a daily basis. The days of working one man to cover, even though we're a small community, one man, it's only a matter of time before that officer is committed to a detail or, you know, to a prior incident. And it already has happened, but it's never been anything critical. But again, as call volumes increase and as society kind of downward slope as far as violent crimes seems to be, it's only a matter of time before we get caught where one of our residents or somebody in our town is in desperate need of help, and there's we, I don't know where to send. So that's my primary concern.
So what I'd like to do is, is close this motion out, maybe you can come back to that even further if anyone else on council has other questions regarding that. But we do have an open motion on the floor, so we'll close the motion out, and then go through, and then we can come back to that, because I think that's a conversation that council wants to have way of the chief on board than what they will, I think it was, was fine. Now, in the case that we currently have a motion open on the mayor's report, is there any other discussion on the matter? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And the motion carries without opposition. This moves us to the treasurer and bills.
Mr. President.
Look at the screen, you can't see me actually looking at you, which is unfair.
I, I was trying to unmute there, sorry. Mr. President, I move that we accept the treasurer's report for October thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, and that we direct the finance officer to pay the bills for the Borough Churchill accrued since October tenth, twenty twenty-two.
Do you, sir?
Second.
Do you, sir? Is there any discussion? As a matter of course, as we should know by now, any bills above the amount of five thousand, I tend to read out separately so that people don't count now in today's world where it's pulled up right in front of you, you can read for yourself, I, I recognize that, but I still go through the process. That being the case, it would appear that we have, if you actually, we direct the threshold today, apparently it's a busy day, many of which are under sanitary, so we'll, we'll see where we go with this. Beginning with Jet Jack, which was sanitary sewer, one hundred and thirteen thousand six hundred and seventy-three dollars and thirty-two cents. State bike services, again, I think we had a fairly large project, so we're just kind of running through each of the, each of the payouts for that. The amount of ninety-six thousand one hundred twelve dollars and thirty-four cents, so like construction, again, same kind of space, eighty-three thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty-seven cents. Gateway engineers, that guy on the other side of the table over there. And the amount of thirty-nine thousand six hundred and thirty dollars and eighty-five cents, we appreciate their work. Then we have lease equipment that included, paying it out to Lateral Solutions, amount of thirty-six thousand eight-two dollars and twelve cents. And then, bigly on landscaping, construction, in my twelve thousand, or seventeen thousand two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty-four cents. And then adding in the workman's comp, fire, an amount of eleven thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven, seventy-nine dollars even, which was underneath the fifteen thousand dollar threshold, but above the, the ten, so we're good there. That being the case, is there any other discussion, either on the treasurer's report or any of the bills that we're due? Looking, everybody, not hearing any, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the bills will be paid, let's find that the treasurer's report is accepted. Moving forward on to actual items, starting with number seven.
Mr. President, I move to adopt Borough of Churchill ordinance seven six four, amending chapter two, three, six of the Code of the Borough of Churchill, property maintenance, by adopting the provisions of the twenty eighteen International Property Maintenance Code as the property maintenance code of the Borough of Churchill.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second, Mr. President.
There's always discussion. Did you have a point you want to leave the discussion?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So we really didn't get an opportunity to talk about this last week, and I kind of wanted to know, are there any estimates as far as how many existing structures do not comply with the provisions of the new code? Because I know that's a process.
So maybe for clarification, I, I don't think there is a list to answer your question, but really what this is doing, so the twenty-twelve code, the current property management code.
Right.
The twenty-eighteen code frankly is very, very similar, so it's, it's, I would say, very unlikely that something that applies with the twenty-twelve code would not be out of code. It's not like the building codes where, you know, this plug, this electrical outlet might have been okay in, you know, nineteen eighty-five, but it's not, this is just more kind of keeping it updated, but there's not going to be a significant amount of material things that will play something, you know, in violation status, I think it wasn't already.
Okay, and then I guess my next question is, and reading the show that there is, there a Board of Appeals, and it looks like we currently don't have anyone appointed to that. What is the process of a candidate that we're going to consider?
So what I, what I usually recommend, because those sorts of appeals are so rare, and this is something we could certainly talk about, but oftentimes, multiple municipalities will generally form an international property management code Board of Appeals, and it oftentimes will be the same, that's the UCC, the Uniform Construction Code Board of Appeals. I don't know if the call, it is. So, yeah, I think that, I wish we were already off the edge of that, actually.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries without opposition. Moving us on to number eight.
Mr. President, I move to adopt Borough of Churchill ordinance seven six five, requiring the Borough of Churchill's tax collector to waive additional charges for real estate taxes when a taxpayer fails to receive tax notice and requests a waiver of additional charges, and when a property or mobile home transfer has taken place within the previous twelve months.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? And this is something we previously discussed, so I don't know if there's any additional discussion on the matter. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries without opposition. Moving us on to number nine.
Mr. President, I move to pass resolution four five four five of the Borough of Churchill, County of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, establishing a minimum municipal obligation, MMO, for pension funds pursuant to Act two oh five, two oh five of nineteen eighty-four, as amended for the year twenty twenty-three.
Second, thank you, any discussion? And an obligation, quite frankly, and that's good. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries without opposition. Moving us on to number ten.
Mr. President, I move to pass resolution four five four six of the Borough of Churchill, County of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, appointing Alexander J. Brassiani as the chief administrator of the Borough Pension Plan.
Second, you, any discussion on the matter? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries without opposition. Moving on to number eleven.
Mr. President, I move to direct the manager to advertise a public notice of availability to review the Churchill Borough twenty twenty-three general fund budget in the Valley Mirror newspaper.
User, second, second. Thank you, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Valley Mirror, along with other, other four events, as I know, but the Valley Mirror will get it, get it set. Moving on to number twelve.
Mr. President, I move to participate with other municipalities in the Churchill Creek Valley Council of Governments, that's T C D C O G, testing program for hiring a new police officer.
Thank you, is there a second? Thank you, any discussion? So, kind of opening into this space, because this was also a space that we can have that same conversation about kind of the, the number of officers that we have. I would just point out that when we look at kind of additions, a couple of different things we look at, not just in the chief one-hundred percent, right, in terms of one-man shifts that we have, but having done this a few times, one of the other discussions that we regularly have on the council space is just how people feel in the presence of seeing the police more often than not. It's, it's a helpful space, you know, I love the ability for an officer to be able to drive down the street, stop, wave, give a second of conversation that you're seeing the, the visibility that it presents. We have been fortunate in our community that we don't have, you know, serious crime, we, you know, our officers have generally remained safe in the space. There's been a few times that they've gotten, they've gotten hurt, and to, to the chief's point of, you know, if somebody gets hurt and not having somebody there, you know, so that the more we can do to give bold presence, you know, within the kind of budgetary space, I think is, is to our, to our benefit. That's just my, my own comment. I don't know if maybe also the other comments on the matter, that comment, I want to make sure they have a chance.
So I have a question, I know you said changed seventeen years ago. Do you know what our population change has been since seventeen years ago to today?
I really have no idea.
Okay, if, if I'm correct, roughly about a three hundred, about two hundred and fifty percent decrease over that time, we haven't really, since the time that I came here, which is about thirteen, fourteen years ago, we were just over three thousand, right? We kind of dipped just under three thousand, so it hasn't been such a large precipitous change that would, that would say, oh, you know, there's been, you know, twenty percent, thirty percent decrease in the population.
And then from seventeen years ago, I guess, what was, what were our obligations for supporting the Churchill Country Club and Westinghouse and their functioning, as far as the police goes?
Well, when I came in, the Westinghouse was just closing up shop, so it was pretty much the status. I mean, there, it was more populated than it is now, but the, the activity pretty much dissipated, and it's, it's pretty much been like it is now. The Churchill Country Club was a public club, most of the club was, is on the Penn Hill side. We had the golf course in a corner of the parking lot of the main club side, but um that, that equated to almost no caller volume, because anything that, that was, any calls for service usually occurred at or somewhere around the club, and Penn Hill's already responded there, so it's that's pretty much, actually, calls have increased since the Greenways went in. We've had a lot of medical assist calls, we've had a few. The officers are directed to do a fifteen-minute patrol there, each one of them, every shift, including night turn to check for occupied vehicles and whatnot. So we do have a few incidents down there, but we try to keep a strong presence just to deter any criminal mischief or any other ATV rotting is a big problem, but we haven't had it down there because of yet, but um yeah, the call volume has increased just slightly ever since the Greenways became a, became active.
Thank you. So I've been thinking about that course of the clubhouse being on the Penn Hill side. Yeah, both, both in a tax space, right, as well as in a, in a call space, right? The actual building went to them, all we got was, was the grass, so we're probably going to touch with.
There's, there's another comment too. While, while that population is down, I think the number right now, last I heard, was like three thousand eleven. It still remains that there's still fifteen hundred homes in the borough, and from what I've seen from making my visits, it's the younger people, single, single people coming in by themselves, so we still have that same number of homes, we don't have those large families.
Yeah, even, even where there's Yeah, even, even where there's the children, it's like I said, I've got a very, you know, I have children-laden street, right? But when you see the difference, just knowing some of the older residents, what the street used to look like. The homes, including, including mine, right, uh, where they used to have four kids or five kids in the home. Now have one kid or two kids in the home, um, which is indicative of a million things about economy, people and everything else. Uh, but it really, you know, I would love to see our, our population increase, but, uh, yeah, we sit around pretty great. That's what I'm doing. So, great question, so any, any other, uh, discussion items? I'm sorry?
Yeah, I mean, I have no problem discussing it, I, I know that it will, sure will be discussed at the Public Safety Committee. Um, but I'm just curious about overtime reports and how that fiscally affects financials, as well as how many one man shifts are happening on a weekly basis. We don't have to, you know, answer that right now, but that's just something that is on my mind.
Well, I don't know if you'd want to give a brief comment on it, and then we can, uh, push forward, pass it.
Um, I know, as far as overtime in the budget goes, uh. The current, uh, budget is seventy-five thousand, and will probably be right around that, but again, that's. That's, um, not, that's just filling the bare minimum as far as. When there are no officers on duty and making sure at least one officer is on the road there, without shift minimums. You know, some of our neighbors are paying well into the, the six digits only because. They have two man per shift minimums, some have three, um, the bigger communities have five or six, so if they fall below that, they're required to pay overtime to, to fulfill a shift. Um, so that, those numbers add up really quick. Um, but still, working the number of one man shifts, and I could, I could, uh. Break the schedule down pretty when we meet with the police committee, but, um. It, where you can see how many one man shifts there were, um, but still seventy-five thousand and. Having as many one man shifts as we do, um, it's, it's, uh, concerning, it's a balancing act, but it's, we do have a considerable number of those more man shifts.
To that end, I would, I would commend the chief that, uh, we've been able to keep our overtime in a very reasonable space. Uh, it's been the case of, of the scheduling and making sure that, uh, folks are able to do those one man shifts in a way that works for us. Um, so I appreciate that, but I think, uh, moving forward, yeah, if we're able to, uh. To extend that flexibility and have those folks in, we'll probably in a, in a better space. Uh, but we can certainly follow up more with that, and I, I have gotten in the past, achieved kind of what the overtime breakdown looked like in kind of previous committees. You know, different, different, uh, different councils, uh, so I'm sure you can provide that again, I don't think that will be, be much of an issue. Uh, any other discussion on the matter?
No, I just want to say thank you, I think we can, you know, discuss that in the committee, I think it would be helpful information for all council members to know about that.
Absolutely, I support that. Uh, any other discussion? Hearing none, then we still have the, the motion on the table with regards to number, number twelve, uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? And the motion carries without opposition, this moves us on to number thirteen.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to sign an agreement with Harville Inc. purchase rock salt. For the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three winter season, and any option years going forward through the South Hills Area Council of Governments. Jacob purchasing alliance bid. Jacob Harville Inc. eighty percent of the sixty, sorry, six hundred tons required to purchase. Equal four hundred tons at eighty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents per ton. Co-starred American Rock Salt, sixty percent of six hundred tons required to purchase. Equal three hundred and sixty tons at sixty-five dollars and seventy cents. Day average price as of August twenty twenty-two, the total amount of salt required to purchase. Is equal to eight hundred and forty tons, last three-year average equals nine hundred and forty-nine. And eight, three tons.
A second, thank you, and thank you. Uh, any discussion on the matter, other than the fact that salt is important first and it is not free? Anything? Hearing nothing, uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
And the motion carries without opposition, moving on to number fourteen.
Mr. President, I would motion to direct the manager to advertise a public notice of the availability of the draft solid waste and recycling ordinance. Amending Churchill Borough Code, Chapter two, five, two, solid waste in the Valley Mirror newspaper.
Can I ask that you add to the end of that in substantially the form presented?
In substantially the form presented.
And I'll, I'll let you second, someone second then, and I'll explain why.
Second.
Okay, so, no, by the way, nothing I like better than the solicitor getting the motion as it's on the floor, but having said that.
Yes, better to get it right.
I, I agree.
Even if it appears to be last minute, but it's not.
I, I, it hurts the brilliant legal mind.
Well thought out and advanced, so the reason for that is, um, the final, there's a red line version that's sort of floating around, so. I just need to kind of wrap that up, maybe play with a little bit of additional language, no substantive changes. But what's essentially part of your package is not really the final draft getting presented to the public, so. Um, just want to leave ourselves a little bit of legal room there so we can kind of finalize that.
And ultimately, it's going to be presented to the public for, for display, so it's not.
The final clean, clean draft version will be correct, and that's, that's what I mean about substantially the form, right?
Understood, any other discussion on the matter? Hearing none, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? And motion carries without opposition, that's a lot of motions to pu- to push through today. Thank you all, uh, for your work in that space, uh, moving on. For the question discussion item, um, run through, do what folks got on, on staff to, to begin with. Uh, I'll start with, uh, manager, you dictate really what happens.
Since, since the chief's here, I just want to commend him, um, when we have the vehicle total. Uh, Ron went an extra step, the initial damage, um, value that we were getting from the insurance was not good.
Right.
And Ron stayed on top of that and bird dogged it, and got us another twelve or thirteen thousand dollars in lease in that process, and, uh, I want to commend him for that, and. And thank Ralph for the numbers on the budget related to tons. Uh, we're trying to really get a good handle on what we've done in the past, um, one of the council members brought up that. Salt used to be thirty-two dollars a ton or so, uh, when they started, and it, it does vary, the statewide average that I put on the agenda. Uh, is subject to change depending on where you're at in the state, so that may not be the exact amount we've came this year, so don't, don't pull that, Ralph did a great job of. Pulling those num- numbers together, and just in general, you can't, I can't, uh, say how much I appreciate it by the staff for putting time into the budget. Uh, every staff member is bought into trying to give more information. To, to really anticipate your questions, so when we're building the budget, we're getting some really good information in that, and that just goes all around, I really appreciate that.
Outstanding, we, we thank everyone, and twelve grand is, uh, real, you know, thank you very much, chief, and, uh. We certainly super appreciate all the work that everyone's done, um. I don't think anybody had anything to comment before we move on to, uh. The engineer, they'll start running in order. And what do we got, sir?
Um, well, our engineer report was provided last week, and continuing to work with the infrastructure committee, uh, on a monthly, bimonthly basis. Um, one specific point, uh, last week, the maintenance work was performed on Brady from. Uh, issues that existed with the previous contract. Um, that was done with oversight by Gateway and the Borough, and as was mentioned earlier, with the bills to be paid. Uh, the sewer contracts are coming to a close, the bigger portion of the pay application. Or included, uh, this month, and those are expected all flows out in December for the plan.
Outstanding, uh, any comments to the engineer?
And I just appreciate, uh, the quality of the reports every month, it's very clear and very concise and, uh. Reshetter at prices, but other than that, you know, you, you do a fabulous job letting us know what's happening, thank you.
Ralph, sir, and, uh, will public works as, as well as fire?
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, the only thing I have to add is, I would ask the residents, do not put your leaves out in the street. We clean the streets so that they're safe and they're not going down into the sewers. We're not there to clean up their leaves out of their yard, so I'd ask the residents not to put the leaves in the street. We're trying to keep the streets as clean as possible, and under fire, we're, we're going to have a busy year this year, we're probably going to be just under five hundred calls this year. And that's all I have, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, and, and thank you everyone in this department, you know, you, you keep us safe and, and we appreciate it very, very much.
I have a comment about, uh, the fire department, um. We only get about thirty percent of our residents who donate to the fire department. We, we send out every, I think it's February or March, a solicitation, and I really want to implore everyone. These people do such an amazing job, and they are volunteer, and whether it's ten dollars or fifty dollars or a hundred dollars once a year. I just think it's so important that our residents, and, and I can see sometimes you forget, or you get the mailer and then you don't, I mean, we do send an envelope. You have to put your own stamp on it, but I really want to, um, reach out to everyone who's listening or what have you, to really think about our fire department, and. When you do get that solicitation, just think whatever you can import, and it doesn't have to be a lot, but. If we could get more people, I, I just think that it really is the right thing to do, we're not, we're not asking much, I, to be quite honest, I was a little shocked that. The percentage was so low, so just wanted to.
Just, just to chime in, you can also do it online, there's information on the forum that if you're. Like me, and you want to do it very easily, you can do it with a credit card in about a minute and a half.
Thank you, Matt, that does make it very easy for everyone.
Would we be able to push that out through savvy citizen for folks with a link?
Hmm, yes. Sounds like we'll have to ask communications here.
A great idea, and I think we need to maybe promote it more in our newsletter and, um, maybe find other ways.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see any, any issue in that space, given that they're a public service for, for our.
Perhaps even on Facebook page.
Yeah, we can discuss that, we have our meeting tomorrow, so we can definitely chat about it.
If only we had a group of people dedicated to, to having a conversation, to try and come up with ways that we can better communicate.
No, I just think it's very, very important, and I think our community needs to support our volunteer firefighters more, thank you.
Well stated.
Added to the agenda, thank you.
Well stated, um, moving through, and I don't know if there's any other, uh, comments on, on discussion, whether it be. Comments on, uh, committee comments on, uh, other staff. I don't want to forget anybody, so I always kind of look back to Mayor, since personally, I always forget if there's any other.
Well, I can, uh, yeah, I was going to make a comment, I. Just a, just a couple of comments here, and I just, um. When we're, working with council, I've been sitting in on a lot of the, uh, committee meetings, and just to see the amount of time and work. That the council members put into those meetings is, uh, I, our residents just don't know the amount of time they spend on, on those meetings. Uh, I just wanted to put that out there, also for Alex and the staff, we're working on that budget, same thing, I don't know how many. Different versions we've gotten that, that budget and reviews of it, just to, you know, come to, uh, an agreement on the twenty-three budget. It's a lot of work that's been put into this, and, um, you know, consideration for it is not just like, oh, let's just pass it. A lot of questions, a lot of people looking at numbers and thoughts of numbers on, moving this, moving that, it's just, just amazing, again, residents don't get the insight from that. As we're, from my perspective, I get to see that. And the other thing too, I, I was looking at something the other day, and on an average, you know, nearly last month, we're five hundred and eighteen pages on our finder. That council has to review, you know, keep up, up to date, we thank Alex for putting out all that information out for us, so, so that we're well informed. The council, mayor, everybody as well, that knows what's going on in, uh, in our borough. Those, the comments, and happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
We, we appreciate your comments, chief, any, any comments?
Uh, just real quick, um, when, when, to, to write off of the, uh, mayor's comments. Um, when I, when Alex came in, maybe two years ago, um. The, the transformation is, uh, I can't even put into words, it's been on wrong, maybe the budget became an actual line item budget. Um, we were all asked as department heads to come up with a very comprehensive line item budget, and some of us, like me, we had to do that from scratch, um. But he's been a great partner to work with, um. And the capital improvement plan, just, uh, on another front, um, it just kind of, the collaboration there just brings everything together, so. Now my hat's off to, I see some of the people from, I'm here five days a week, and I see some of these people across the hall as, as often as I'm here, so. The amount of work that, that goes in is profound, and, uh, so my hat's off to everybody for the, the job they do, and thanks, Alex.
Okay, sir, we, we appreciate it, for, Mr. Solicitor, any comments?
I know I usually say none, I do have one quick one, um, that is that, uh, we, I think are going to be changing the way that we implement the sewer fees. This year, and that may include the passage of an ordinance through December meeting. So even though we haven't asked you to authorize that advertisement, because I will view that as, you know, if you're voting on it, you're, you've essentially okayed. Uh, ratified the, the advertisement, but I just don't want to have anyone be totally shocked that we see it at ordinance, um. On December twelfth, with a line item improvement of the Alka-Sand sewer being, and the maintaining the current, maintaining the current for certain fees, but. As I think everyone knows, Alka-Sand will be bumping against rates up year after year, and we, and I think the way it's been formalized here has been just a little bit different, so I think we might have cleaned that up a little bit.
Our rate was stayed the same, Alka-Sand in December twenty twenty-one committed to a five-year plan about increasing seven percent each year. Not only the per thousand gallon rate, but their service charge, so what they asked us to do as part of concern orders to pass. That annually, I guess, is a part of just making the public aware, of course, that's billed through your local, or Penn joint water bill, you know, that you get. Uh, so, yeah, thanks, Gavin, sure.
Understood and on the radar, appreciate it. Uh, council, any other comment that they would like to make, discussion, anything, uh, I'll leave the floor to council people?
Actually, I do.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, the Churchill Recreation Board, uh, we did groups as a committee this past, uh, last week. And I just want everybody to know that, you know, we were looking at, we're looking into many different things that we can do this year. Um, of course, we're going to have our Community Day, August twelfth, which is going to be very big, like we did four or five years ago. Um, on, on, on the grounds of, of pay school, but beyond that, before COVID hit, we used to have a, uh. What, what, what would we call it, Churchill Dinner every year, and, uh, you know, we'd get forty, fifty people. And we're going to revisit that and hopefully do that again in the spring, and we now have more ways to. Because I, I would always hear, oh, I didn't hear anything about it, I didn't know anything about it, well, now with all the social media, we have more. We have more ways to reach out to people and let them know about it, so hopefully, when, when that comes to fruition, um, everybody out there, excuse me. They will know about it, but that's something we're working on, we're also working on maybe possible speakers like we've had in the past here in, in the Yegel Room, and. Of course, Easter Bunny, Saturday, April eighth, if you want to mark it down right now, twenty twenty-three, um, we are planning to have Santa. This coming year, Saturday, December seventeenth, so. Um, we have to kind of figure that out, but there's, there's, uh, many other things that we are working on this year. And also, I want to say Maggie DeSanto and Helen DeFranco are our two newest members of the, um, uh, Churchill Recreation Board.
Recommendations, you guys will point them.
What's that?
I said you're recommending, the board's recommending to this board, so you guys.
Well, we have to say it to you, you have to.
Right, 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 those are the two, yes.
As you said.
So, uh, yes, I.
You covered it, Alex.
Thank you, Alex. Thank you, that's it.
Excellent, any other, any other discussion items? Council, uh, one thing you did remind me of, uh, that I do kind of want to bring up, and I'll bring up inside of, uh, government management, which is. Uh, it would be great to have a junior, like council person.
Yeah.
Right, a Churchill resident kid at the high school, maybe someone who can participate. I'm sure there's a, there's a role for them and something that they can credit for, quite frankly, in speaking with the high school. Uh, so I just want to put that on everybody's radar as something that, uh, starting to pursue, and I think it has, it has value for us. Um, to have one of, one, you know, the kid, and quite frankly, knowing our. Our composition, and, you know, to be honest, they may or may not be, you know, up at the high school, but there'll be high school each, because we, we do have a compositional, a lot of kids who. Who are and a lot of kids who aren't, uh, up at, up at the high school, so, but either way, I think it's something that would be great to pursue, and it'd be an interesting space for us to have. A young person's opinion, uh, whether it be for, for rec comments or just for what they think of how we govern. So, uh, any other comments? Hearing none, yes, sir?
Are you doing an executive session?
My, my, my last, my last thing, uh. So, I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn, we are going to head into executive session quickly for just a personnel matter. Uh, and then after that, we will all go home, so move.
Second.
There we go. There we go, yeah, except that, people, thank you very much.
Thank you.